Hi, this is Mary Greendale and welcome to Just Thinking. Town meeting is ahead and so today we're going to talk about the warrant. And for those who don't know what the warrant looks like, that's it. Every year we get one and every year they are--this one's not bad. This one's not bad. Sometimes they're much thicker. So anyway, we have with us today two guests. First Chairman, Chairperson, so sorry, of the Select Board, Tina Heine. And Acting Town--is it Administrator or Manager?
Manager.
Manager at this time. I can, you know, anyway, you haven't finished that job. Acting Town Manager Kathleen Buckley. So thank you very much for joining me, ladies. How's this all gone? I know this is a miserably complicated--
Period of time and--
Yeah, all that.
I would like to come out strong right out of gate here and just thank Kathleen. Folks may not know this, but when Travis came in as Town Administrator, there was some shuffling on deck of staff positions. But the end result was no increase in headcount to the Town Administrator, now Town Manager's office. When Kathleen joined, again, there was no significant change in the headcount. Kathleen fills the role of Assistant Town Manager today. She fills the role of interim Town Manager. She fills the role of HR, Human Resource Director today. So Travis left on March 1st. We've been solo with Kathleen in those three critical positions since March 1st. And in that time, we have gone almost to the finish line on the hiring of a new Town Manager. We have prepared a town warrant that we're going to discuss tonight. We've accomplished a significant amount of business. Within this town warrant is an article related to the DPW. But the amount of time and energy that the Board has had to spend, and therefore Kathleen has had to spend to support the Board, for us to really dive in deep and understand the community's thoughts and comments about the DPW project and many, many others, has been an enormous amount of time. I won't give the number of hours of additional meetings that we've had since Travis left on March 1st. But I just would like to really recognize before we get started with the warrant, what a fantastic job Kathleen has done in each of that roles-- each of those roles, excuse me-- particularly stepping into the interim Town Manager. We are not an additional staff member. We are the same number of staff that we had back in 2020 when Travis came in. But Kathleen has been steering the ship masterfully since he left. And I will say that she is a masterclass in just taking on role after role after role, responsibility after responsibility. So what we're looking at here tonight is prep work from Travis before he left, but Kathleen carrying it through to the finish line in quite an impressive way. So again, I just want to recognize Kathleen for her--
Thank you, Kathleen.
--impressive job as interim Assistant and HR Director.
And I would be remiss to say, we'll see it in the warrant in one of the articles. Not only is all of this happening through the Town Administrator, Town Manager's office, but also down in HR. There's a change from the West Suburban Health Group to the GIC insurance policy of plans for our employees that Kathleen's been shepherding through as well. We don't do that every year. I think we do that every 15 years.
Wouldn't you know.
It's been an enormous responsibility on the HR side. So I cannot sing her praises enough and I do not want to miss the opportunity to do so here.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you. Thank you both so much.
And I can add to that in that she has launched the Policy Committee that is looking at, as directed, how the policies interconnect across government. And I have yet to see you cross, which is, I think, quite admirable. You know, you don't seem to get angry or upset or whatever. And I don't know, maybe at home you've got a sledgehammer that you take to the walls or something, but you seem so chill. It's really nice.
Thank you.
Wouldn't be me.
I'm enjoying it, so.
Well, that's good.
I enjoy the residents and I enjoy the employees.
That's good.
And our department heads are great, so it all works.
That makes it all, yeah, that makes it worthwhile. All right, so as with every town meeting, we go through these preamble kinds of things. You know, we hear the Boards from the Select Board. We hear from the Finance Committee. We grant some authority to the Town Treasurer to sell any leftovers that we have. Do we have any leftovers this year? Some years we don't even have any leftovers.
I am not aware of or familiar with, but we have not asked the question specifically, but nothing's risen to the top.
Okay. Then there are a couple of programs. I'm just going to, you know, quick say there's a tax work-off program for seniors. I'm mentioning these only to make sure that people are aware. We take the advantage of doing that. There is another program for seniors that is from the assessors, which is that you can borrow, in essence, borrow against your house. You can draw down from the equity in your house the cost of your taxes. So this article is about changing the interest rate on that from 8% to 6%, which is to your advantage. Changing income requirements. Again, we're trying to make it the best possible for the people that it applies to. Again, these are senior benefits. Then there's a Veterans Tax Exemption. Is this one a new one?
No.
Looking at it, it was like, is that the same thing I should have asked? Yeah, no, I think this is the same.
I think it's the same.
This is not a different article in a meaningful way.
This is the same one we do every year for Veterans Tax Exemptions. And then there are Personal Property Exemptions. And that's basically saying if you're running a small business and you have equipment that might be eligible for taxation, unless that equipment totals more than $5,000 or we're not even bothering with it, forget about it. It takes more time and money to go and inspect these small businesses for anything less than that. So that's what that is about.
And those articles, save for the first two, the report of the Finance Committee and Select Board, that list of articles you just ran through, those will all be on a consent agenda, which we have done before. It's just in a more efficient way for Town Meeting to get through the housekeeping articles, their business, to take care of that night. The moderator will pause and take any questions and Town Meeting votes to accept a consent agenda. But that's been the past practice of the last couple of years and we'll do that again.
Yeah, and that's basically saying we have no problem with these as they are. Okay, revolving funds. Again, we have revolving funds. Is this part of the consent package?
This will not be. There's one significant difference that I would call out here, which is the Pinecrest Revolving Fund. Looking for here, Pinecrest Golf Course, right. That's an increase of $125,000. So that together, the Golf Course Advisory Committee with our Facilities Manager, James Keast, have worked out a number of projects that need to be addressed. And so increasing the spending limit on the revolving fund allows that work to get done in a timely manner, in an appropriate manner. So it's recognizing the importance of the Pinecrest Golf Course and giving those that manage it through staff and through the Advisory Committee, Commission, Committee--
Committee.
--the ability to tackle the projects that they see as essential to keeping the golf course in good shape.
Okay, but to be clear, this is not an appropriation of $350,000. This is merely the fees and whatever other things we collect--
Contract--
--from the owner, not owner, the operator of the golf course. Whatever benefits we get from them--
That's right.
--up to $350,000, the Committee will be able to spend that money. Okay. Pay unpaid bills. Well, drat, even Town Government has to do that. Okay, we'll just-- and transfers. And then we start with the classification thing, okay? The job and wage classification. We'll just jump to that.
And the paid unpaid bills and current fiscal year transfers, that's updated right until the night of. So the Select Board will go into a meeting, a posted public meeting, at 6 o'clock that night typically. And we'll review these. The moderator will be updated. And then anything that's specific up to that moment in time. So we don't have the numbers today because we wait until basically the day of.
Yeah, and then you've got some little guy running in saying, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, I've got one more bill."
Haven't seen that happen yet. It's the first time for everything.
All right, so the Job Classification Plan. And why do we even have this in here? Management plan.
Sure, I'm happy to explain. It's a transparency that we show the public how their dollars are spent on salaries and all government salaries are made public. This gives the public an idea of how the positions are ranked and how they're classified based on role and responsibility. And it's based on market. These are all professional positions that are set based on market and roles and responsibilities.
Okay, so this segues into the Job Classification Chart. So there's a change. We are doing the COLA increase. So is there anything here that you want to address yourselves as far as the classification chart this year? I have just-- Yep. Myself, I have just one question that I'm going to raise with you, okay? Just to put something on the table because it bothers me. If I take the maximum salad-- salad-- maximum salary that's somebody who is a 600, classified as a 600, and I multiply out the maximum step for that person, the salary comes out to $76,908. Now, somebody who is in a 600 can be, for example, the Assistant Assessor. And I happen to know what that job entails after seven years of serving on that Board. And because Holliston tends to-- has a policy that says we want to be right in the middle. We want, you know, we want most of the people-- or half the people to pay more and half the people to be paid less, comparing us to other communities, we end up, you know, right in the middle, sort of average for salary. And we do not necessarily get the best candidates or the people who are, you know, trying to move up the ladder or have had experience. Instead, we get the brand-new candidate right out of whatever and they have no experience. And then the Town Assessor has to spend all of his time training that individual. Already went through it a couple of times in my duration, my time of two terms. And it's just not good. So what does it take to change that 50%, that sort of middle-of-the-road policy? What do we have to do?
So we typically hire a consultant to help us with classification and compensation. Typically, I would do the studies and look at our peer towns and what they're paying before we post if we have a gap in staffing. So sometimes I take a look at the market and would decide with the Town Administrator, Town Manager, that we might, our range might start a little bit higher so that we are competitive. You know, maybe over $50,000 for entry level. It's always with commensurate to experience. So for those that might be moving to another, from another town, they might need to have three weeks vacation instead of two. Or they may be making more and we would need to try to compete with that. But it's, what we would do is make a suggestion to Town Meeting and Town Meeting would have to agree that we are changing the tables. So every year at Town Meeting, we would bring the tables to Town Meeting in the town warrant and we would explain, you know, what the summary was. We did have a consultant take a look at a number of things in the HR Department in the past few months based on workflow. And we did discuss that something about moving us up to the 60th percentile might be a little better fit in this area with our competing neighbors.
I would add--
No, go ahead.
--could add one thing to this, which is coming really from our round of interviews for the Town Manager position. We heard from all four candidates during the interview process how much they saw Holliston as a very desirable community without ever touching on salary. So I just wanted to highlight three things, three or four things that we heard through those interview processes that speaks to why people would come to Holliston. So it's not only the salary. And I would say that it's the culture within Town Hall in general, the gratitude that, I think, employees, we certainly want them to receive, the focus on service to residents that sort of grounds everyone who's working there in a really positive way. I think, from what I hear, from what I understand, everyone's rowing in the same direction, which is a good thing to be a part of. I would say that the culture in Town itself, you know, what Holliston has to offer as a community is a really strong draw. And again, I'm pulling from what I heard from the candidates who came to look at Holliston as a Town Manager for that role. I would say that the strength of our department heads is remarkable. We have incredibly strong department heads who go above and beyond in many different ways. And so I think if you're looking to-- I'll shine a light on Chief Stone, who is, you know, far and away an excellent police chief, certainly in Metro West and probably in the state. And so when he goes for grant awards, when he goes for certifications and for recognitions and those come back to the Holliston Police Department, it looks really, makes the Town of Holliston and the Police Department really attractive and desirable. So our department heads go a long way to making Holliston a place that along with salary is somewhere somebody would want to work. So I just didn't want to miss the opportunity to sing the praises of those non-monetary parts of why someone would choose to come to Holliston.
And I agree with all of them. Thank you.
And also the contribution and commitment to professional development is very, very strong here and it is definitely a factor in their decisions.
And that is something that changed under Travis. And for that, I will be eternally grateful to the man because some of us were pushing for it years ago and we just couldn't quite get it there. But he made it clear why it was so important. It's not just a giveaway or a day off. All right, we're going to-- the rest of the retirement, the compensation package is really just for your information only kind of thing. And yes, there was a 2.25% COLA increase this year. All right, so now we are at some unknown article because we don't have numbers yet.
We're working on that.
Adoption of 32B. Do we need to explain that?
Yes, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
So the Town adopted Chapter 32B in the early '60s to provide health insurance for our firefighters, our on-call firefighters. And we are transitioning to a new purchasing group called Group Insurance Commission for all of our health coverage. And they took a look at the vote in the '60s and thought that we should just revote it at Town Meeting just to make sure that it is, that everyone is understanding. And it says, "From our Town Council, it's aligning its past adoptions with the documentation needed for the Group Insurance Commission for our health care." So to support our on-call fire department, we-- our community provides health insurance for all those active on-call firefighters. And we're very proud of that and it does really make a big difference in our program here. So we're happy about that.
On-call departments usually have a struggle to get a lot of people to attend fires. And that's even true for most full-time departments also have call departments as a feature because they don't have everybody at full-time. But we are really blessed that these folks come out and show up. And I've heard lots of really great comments from folks that, you know, where we've been at a scene or something. It's like, "How do you get so many people to come?" Well, we take good care of them or at least we want to, so. Okay, the next one is a salary change for the Town Clerk. Now, this position is just a little bit weirder than any other. It's the only elected but paid position that we have. It used to be that we give out stipends to Select Boards and that kind of stuff, but--
To be clear, it was $25 and then $50.
Yeah, well, see, in my day, the very first year was $500. And this was back in the '80s. Okay, this was in the '80s. We got $500 and the Chair got $600.
Yeah, no, $50 for the Chair.
But back in the '80s, we were doing the real work. There was, that we were it. There was nobody else.
Because it was an executive, an executive secretary, right.
Secretary, okay. I mean, and thank God Paul LeBeau was as ambitious and willing to do as much as he did. But, you know, we were basically it. So you talk about pulling together these documents and stuff.
Right.
You know, we were, we were there.
You had the typewriter in front of you.
But anyway, so tell us how you come to this number. I guess that's the biggest--
Sure, so we look at towns of similar size as ours, similar population because the Clerk's Office does handle all of the elections and all of the census. So we look at towns that have the same population. We also look at polling places. So if a town has a number of polling places, the staff, the number of staff that our clerk is managing. So this would probably be something that we would also look at when we look at the compensation tables for the department heads.
And as an elected position in Town Hall, Town Meeting votes the salary, right?
Yeah, as opposed to the contract employees that we have or whatever. Okay, all right, the next one will be the budget. And we don't, we don't even attempt to play that game on this little conversation. And then we're going to start with the capital expenditure, $1.8 million. And what is this? This is just to establish it, right? Just to transfer from funds, yeah. To get--
Before we get there though, Mary, you might want to back up to one article. So in between-- nope, you don't need to back up at all. It's coming after, forgive me. I jumped ahead too fast.
You've got to keep-- well, the problem is, I suspect, they keep moving.
They do.
You know, when you put them away at night, you know? They just scurry around. Anyway, let's talk about the street sweeper. Can we jump to the street sweeper?
That was where I was jumping to, so thank you.
Okay, we'll talk to the street sweeper. And this is a lease-to-own. I remember the conversation about, you know, whether to buy or whether to own or whether-- okay, so we're just, this would be year one?
Well, there's always history. So there's a little bit of context that comes by way of history here. And the history is that prior to '21, we had a street sweeper. And the story, the narrative around that, the context is that it needed to go for repairs and it never came back. So the repairs took a long time and there were decisions made with the management of the DPW at that time. Management has since changed at the DPW in that department. But there were decisions made at the time that they didn't want the street sweeper back or something to that effect. So it never came back and therefore we had to lease. So a contract rather for services. So from '22 through till today, we've been contracting those services. But I think it's important that listeners understand, that Town Meeting voters understand, that we have owned a street sweeper in the past. This is not a new piece of equipment for the Town of Holliston. It's just that we had a number of years, '22, '03, '04, '05, where we were contracting those services. And as a result, that was rolled into the DPW's operating budget. And people didn't really, there would be no obvious touch point to say, "Oh, well, we're now contracting as opposed to running this normally." The quotes that came in for '26, fiscal year '26, are significantly higher. And if we continue to contract for services, we are going to be outpaying. We're going to be incurring huge costs for the benefit of that contract. So the conversation to lease-to-own, so bring into the DPW fleet a street sweeper, that's their 24/7, 365, came back into consideration. My understanding is it was always wanted, but the contracting of services was working out okay. The place where one could say, "Is this an increase in level services, right? Are we doing more by way of a street sweeper?" Really, you have to go back to 20, before 2022 and look at how the streets were getting swept then and what we sort of have lost over the past couple of years. So we're no longer able to do year-round cleanups because when you contract, you're tied to that contract. So it's, we're returning to the fleet having a street sweeper in it through this article, but we're also returning to a level of service that residents really expect. But they're not, they have not been getting through the contract for services piece. And we are, for our MS4, which is our stormwater management, we are, for that permit, we are required to do street sweeping. So this is not a nice-to-have by any stretch of the imagination and it's not a new piece of equipment. And I think that's important to point out because folks might look at that and say, "That's a big number."
Yeah, well, yeah, although I must admit, you know, it didn't seem as big as, you know, when you think about some of the other things that you end up having to buy. All right, other capital expenditures. Just, you know, I don't think we need to go through these. People are going to be able to read them. We have $1.5 million worth of various replacements and repairs and so forth. And now that we have a facilities person, so much-- we have so much more information about what needs to be done. So unless there's something that you want to point out?
I would only point out that, well, some of these items were on the list and not brought forward in previous years, like the last year or two, because needs were elsewhere.
Okay.
So they're not new to us. So the HVAC at the police station is not a new item. It's just one that wasn't able to advance. So this is not the first time the Select Board was considering this. The capital subcommittee was considering this. I would look to the Adams School Roof, two of two. There was an application. So the first time it came forward, the plan was to submit an application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority so that we would get state-matching funds. We did not qualify. And so we're back, we're not going to not finish the job. And that was always explained to Town Meeting as well as the Select Board that if we didn't get accepted into the program, the Massachusetts School Building Authority program for that roof replacement, we would be back to Town Meeting to ask for the remaining funds. So that's what you're seeing here.
So here we are. Okay, all right. Oh, this is, this is the DPW. Obviously, you've had an exciting season of DPW conversations as the issue of Cross Street and whether or not we'd be able to use it hasn't been resolved because it's caught in the court system and that's a terrible place to be stuck. And then the possibility of using the town-owned land that's up behind Pinecrest has raised any number of concerns on any number of fronts. So tell me what you're trying to do here.
Well, I think we'll both take a stab, but I'll go first because it's such a big topic and there are multiple moving parts. And so this actually links into another article for culverts later. So it may be that we have this conversation throughout the review of this warrant. But here, we had intended to, we had intended to bring forward an article that would specify a site. We are running out of options and we are running out of time for our current DPW facilities. We are also looking at costs going up significantly. They have gone up significantly. And so there's no sense of sitting back on our heels and waiting for land court. That is not a feasible option. And so that had been something the Select Board had been discussing, deliberating on really since the fall. And so we were moving in the direction of bringing an article forward for Town Meeting that named a site. We knew from, from 2022, when the feasibility work was being done with Weston and Sampson, that there were sites that were rising to the top. So I won't go into all of the detail because the Select Board will go into all of the detail on site selection at a later date. It's not here in this article. But we, as a result of multiple moving factors, we pulled the article or pulled the thought of putting an article that had a site on it from the warrant. That doesn't at all, though, mean we can stop making progress. We have to continue to make progress on this project because the need is so great. And so what this article is going to do is appropriate money for interim solutions and also to advance design engineering. To address many of the concerns that we were hearing from residents. So we've had weeks now, hours and hours and hours of public comment. And this is good. We're hearing from, from the public. It does seem like community priorities have shifted. And it may be that we haven't heard from all of the community and that we're hearing from a vocal minority. But what we're hearing is that priorities have shifted. And so some of the questions being asked, we can't get to through feasibility funding only. And that was the original appropriation, was for feasibility work. So we need extra, we need more. I wouldn't say extra, but we need more than what we had for feasibility to move into design and engineering-type conversations, to come back to the community, to address many of the concerns that we're hearing. For example, traffic. When we think about a location, whatever the location is, we're hearing concerns about traffic. And so you can't get to answers through feasibility work. You've got to go into design work. And so the article helps us with that. But most importantly, this article helps us with an interim solution for the inevitability that the buildings no longer function on Central Street and Arch Street. We cannot be a town without DPW operations. No resident would accept that, no business would accept that and it would put an enormous amount of liability and risk on the Town of Holliston. So we have to take steps. And that's that forward progress that we have to make. And that's what this article accomplishes.
So besides the design, what does the money go for?
So we will be looking for acquisition, installation of temporary DPW facilities. So there's more work to be done to better, not better, but to complete, fill out the comments section here. We're looking at a draft. But we will have to acquire land and we will have to acquire modular units to house the DPW operations. So we don't yet know where that land will be, but we'll have to place it somewhere, the DPW, in order to operate it. And we'll have to use alternate buildings to do that.
Would some of the money or any of the money go to land acquisitions or acquisition or do you have to come back for that?
For an interim solution? Well, if we're talking about renting, it would, you know, we would not-- this article would accomplish that.
Accomplishes it all?
Yeah.
Okay, is any of this for any kind of interim repairs at the building, at the existing facilities?
That's been ongoing. Whatever's needed to be done to keep the building safe for our employees has been done and that will continue to be done. But again, at some point, you run out of options on how you can do that. But to date, we've been able to do that and we'll continue to do that. But in terms of a significant fundamental repair of the building in a way that modernizes it where we need to be, that money's not being invested because these buildings are-- it where we need to be, that money's not being invested, because these buildings are anywhere between 20 and 30 years past their useful life. So it would not be something you could justify to the taxpayers. But in terms of keeping the doors open and employees safe, yes, those repairs are being done. But no, nothing in terms of modernizing it for where DPW should be functioning today and into the future. You wouldn't, the board has not been at all...
Inclined.
No, to invest money, and we've got no opinion that suggests that we should. And we have great consultants and great staff that are advising the board throughout all of this, and have been for years.
And I think, and I'm assuming that perhaps still on the Town website, it is possible to see the pictures of the decrepit nature of some of the parts of some of the, of one of the buildings in particular, the one on Central Street. But they, they both have wicked, wicked issues. And the Highway Department has been where it is the whole time I've been here, and I arrived in '66. And at that time, it wasn't as big as it is, you know, they, we just kept adding on to it and so forth. But we clearly never really sat down and said, you know, what do we want to do?
Our house is about 150 feet, 200 feet away from the DPW. It's just the rail trail goes right between, so, you know, people don't necessarily connect how close some of the homes in my neighborhood are, but we're right there. So when I'm out in my yard, I often, people come and talk to me. And I was talking to someone who walked by the other day on her way past the DPW facility, and she said, you know, her father, back in the 1950s, her father opened that building.
Yeah.
So it's been there since the 1950s, and it is now a solid 75 years later.
Yeah, and it was, it's not like it's made with steel I-beams and, you know, really modern technology.
Well, I think it was built in the '50s as a barn, if you think of a 1950s barn.
Yeah. I'm gonna, I've just noticed that we are at 30 minutes, and I usually like to keep these things moving, because I think people probably fall asleep before we get to the end. So let's just quickly say, there's a culvert that seems to need to be done for us to even get to this point.
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be included in the $7 million request if that passes, but we do have an article here to ask Town Meeting if they're not inclined to pass $7 million.
The first one, we need to do the second one.
We would ask them for that, yeah.
Okay, so the culvert is just near the DPW, and it had, it's the access to the DPW, and it has to be done one way or the other?
One way or the other.
Okay. The ADA sidewalk and ramp repairs, this is year three, this is just an ongoing sort of thing. The Holliston Drug Awareness Group has, it wants to, they need money, they're asking for money. But what I'm a little bit confused about is, what is the piece that we're funding? I mean, why is it that it isn't all from the opioid grant or whatever that we got?
Because in their infinite wisdom, the state said you have to go through a legislative appropriation of that money. So even though it flows to Holliston for that, the single purpose that's outlined here in this article, the state requires Town Meeting, or whatever your legislative body is, to make that appropriation.
Okay, well, that makes a lot of sense.
This is not taxpayer dollars coming out of our property taxes.
This is the grant.
This is the settlement.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it comes to the town, but then the town has to take this step to use it.
Okay, somebody, somebody was looking for a make-work job. Town engineer position, let's talk about that, because that's a biggie. And may I say, we used to have a town engineer. You talk about things that we used to have, you know? He, it was a he, there were two different ones that I can remember, was at the Highway Department. So if you can picture that, and the, well, you can't even tell now, because it's been rearranged, but I mean, he even had an office in there, okay? So tell me about, I know the need, but go ahead, you tell me.
Well, one might expect to see a new position in one of the, in the DPW, or one of the town departments within the operating budget. Here in this article, what's, within this warrant, and then through this article, what's being proposed is that we pay for it this first year out of the Programmatic Stabilization Fund. And without get, for time's sake, without getting into the details of that Programmatic Stabilization Fund, we have used it in the past for things like moving towards regional dispatch, or am I getting that wrong? ALS.
ALS.
Sorry, ALS, ambulance service, excuse me. So we've used it in the, in the past. And so what's interesting about this article is that we're looking to accomplish that. So it's not hitting the operating budget this year, until we realize the savings, which are estimated very conservatively to be about $1 million in savings for what we would otherwise contract for engineering responsibilities and decisions and so on. And I will say this, that Travis before he left, and Kathleen since, they've done their due diligence with town departments. So they've sat with department heads and really heard the feedback a number of different occasions over the past year, two, three years, to understand where would an engineer work? Because there are decisions, like what type of engineer do you, do you hire? Where do they spend their time? What, what is the benefit that town's going to realize? And so it's out of those working conversations that we estimate conservatively that a town engineer at a salary of about $135 with, with benefits would save the town about $1 million in contracted engineering services. Where it is now is with the Finance Committee for their review. And so it's, it's an article that is not totally in lockstep, ready to go for, locked and ready, rather I should say, for May 7th, but that is certainly our intent.
Okay. All right, the report of the Community Preservation Committee, they will just present what they, what they have for funds. They're not really doing anything with it at the moment.
We will hear from the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee at Town Meeting. They don't generally present to the Select Board.
Okay, all right. Well, the point is that they are going to, they're going to point out what it is that is, you know, being, they have on reserve and what they're looking for as appropriations from Town Meeting. One of the things, I will just give you a little clue, is a pickleball court. And that's, that's usually a fun thing. I noticed it's at Mission Springs, and I'm not sure if I remember correctly, people didn't like it when it was downtown, because it went thonk, 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 as people played. I'm not sure people at Mission Springs will either, but that's just something we'll wait and see on. Open space and recreation plan, you folks are the ones who are asking for this. We need a plan, we haven't had one in a bit, but...
I believe it was last updated in 2009. And so this is coming, it's coming through the Select Board at the request of our new conservation agent, and I'm going to not say his name well, but his first name is Tyler, and Tyler, I'm so sorry. There are multiple consonants in, in the middle, where you would not expect to find them in the last name. Nonetheless, this is a priority for our new conservation agent to update that 2009 plan. It updates maps and our understanding of where there's open space and where we want to see it protected, advanced, maybe we want to see more or less. That all comes out of an open space plan.
And we're supposed to do them every five years?
Yeah, that's right, it's overdue.
So it's not like, it's like, we are way behind the eight ball on that one.
And Parks and Recreation are also in support of it. They also voted, yes.
All right, and then we're just going to skip by a water main easement. We've got a home rule petition, which means somebody brought forward an idea. This is the one about, we did a TV show on this, which is the legal residents who do not have voting rights, they're here on green cards or whatever. We want to have a conversation, and it's a conversation that we hope to broaden to a state level, because nothing can happen unless the state goes along with it, about whether or not they should or should not have voting rights at a local level for Town Meeting and Town Elections. There is a show specifically about that subject, so look for it also, it's just thinking.
And Mary, I have to say that I was not a voting citizen until the age of 30. My parents had lived in Holliston already for 25 years, raised all four of their daughters before around that same time they became U.S. citizens. So they're among us, all of our neighbors, among all of our neighbors and other residents here in Holliston, there are many people to whom this applies. I think I'm living proof of that, although I'm now a U.S. citizen. For many, many years, I was, my parents were, living examples of, of people who this affected.
Okay. Next one is just changing our language from Town Manager to Town Administrator, and changing all the places that is in every piece of paper that we have. Demolition Delay Bylaw, we're not going to go into that one today, because I have the Chair of the Committee coming for an interview this week about that. It's just a, that one needs its own conversation. Then there's another citizens petition that we will also not address, because I need to have the actual, you know, participants here for that. It's a firearm petition. And then the zoning stuff, floodplains, we always have to update these things. And of course, now with whole lots of changes in insurance and that kind of thing, we, we really do need to go back and do those. And then the final one that is likely to draw some, some serious conversation will be the zoning bylaws to change or to completely expand what we do for accessory units, accessory dwelling units. And historically, we allowed accessories to be done for family only. That is, you could add the mother-in-law apartment for me, but you couldn't add an apartment and just rent it to your best friend. Now, under state law, that has changed, and by right, accessory units can be for anybody. And so now we have to rewrite our, our zoning bylaw.
We made a first pass of it back in October. The Attorney General then took it up for review, as is the requirement by law, and we're waiting for Attorney General feedback. Today, as we sit here taping this, it is the recommendation of the Town Planner that we pull the article, because we have not yet received sufficient, there's meaningful feedback from the Attorney General's Office that would, would then make this something that Town Meeting would really be well-served to debate.
So we can't, we can't discuss it, because the AG's office hasn't gotten back to us, basically.
That, and also that there's likely coming a recommendation to pull it from the warrant.
Yeah, yeah.
For this, for this May Town Meeting. It'll be back, for sure.
It'll be back in October, yeah. But yeah, don't, so we have to goose the AG's office along, basically, right? All right, anything else that you want to add? Do we have anything special, different, or otherwise? We're starting at 7 o'clock. This is May 7th, it's a Wednesday, not a Monday, you need to keep that in mind. We're also used to the Mondays, but we had a snack oogalich. Okay, so it's Wednesday, it's at 7 o'clock.
No, no, no changes to how Town Meeting's been set up in the past with additional parking for those who need accessibility, for, we anticipate, as we have in the past, childcare through the Community Action Fund. I will just say this, that stopping in the lobby, giving time to stop in the lobby is always a good thing. We often have groups that are interested in putting up information. It is a place to have that one-on-one conversation before you go into Town Meeting. So if you're able to get there early, great, because, or if you want to miss the report of the Finance Committee and Select Board and come in a little bit late, that's also okay. Excuse me, but you can use that time in the lobby to interact with folks who are out there, to share really important information, so.
I'm going to do a plug for the town clerk, because she does want people to remember that it takes a while to go through the process, not because the process itself takes long, because it's all electronic now. It's just that you can get a backup of people, which we did this last year a couple of different times. So if you get there just at 5:07, thinking you're going to breeze right in, there may be 50 people in front of you already, and that will get you, you'll be late, and we can't start the meeting until we get a quorum. And so it's best to get there a little bit early, take some time. This is available how? This is available on? Will be available, it's not available yet on the...
On Wednesday, on the Town Website, under Town Links, and then it's under Town Meeting.
Copies, often at Suparet, copies at the library as well, and also the Council on Aging, we make copies available there. And postcards will be going out with a QR code, that's, yeah, that's our intention. Send postcards out to every home in Holliston with a QR code, linking you to the site to get the information.
So print it out, go to Town Meeting. We'll see you there. Okay, May 7th, see you then. Thank you, folks.